Ready? Say line. The February 24th, 2015, regular meeting of the City Council will now reconvene. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Selic. There's no closed session report this evening?
Okay, will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance led by Council Member Pieter, followed by the invocation by Dr. Roger Terebasi from Viewpoint Church?
The flag of the United States of America and Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for this wonderful city and the privilege that we have of living here. We thank you for these public servants who sacrificed their time and their energies to govern us. We pray this evening that your ultimate will would take place, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. Amen.
Okay, we have no presentations this evening, so Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Pieter? Councilman Petros?
Yeah, one brief announcement that since February 17th, Back Bay Drive has been closed. It will be closed through the 27th for a pavement rehabilitation where the surface is being slurry sealed and recoded. More importantly, though, the striping that will be put in place is the, one of the first projects that came out of the bicycle master plan for Newport Beach. The new striping will permit vehicular travel in the northbound direction as it currently does, but provides greater passage for bicycles and pedestrians, and separates that, those two, for a much safer experience out on the Back Bay Trail. So very excited that this is moving along, but we just encourage or really appreciate your patience with recognizing the closure and allowing that to come to completion. And I do want to thank our Public Works Group for getting on that and getting it done so quickly.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor Selic. I have a few announcements, please. Pleased to announce. I was pleased to provide, well, I made a few public appearances over the last two weeks I wanted to share with you. I was pleased to provide the welcome comments at the first Sustainability Summit held in Newport Beach on February 5th for energy and technology executives and investors. And these executives are building the models to provide the energy, water, transportation networks, housing, and food necessary to support sustainable growth. It was a great group of people. On February 16th, I also welcomed the North American executives of Goodwill International, who were meeting in Newport Beach to celebrate their 90th anniversary in Orange County. I was impressed with Goodwill's business model, nearly 100% self-sustaining through their retail stores and business services. So I learned a lot when I spoke with them. And last Friday, I was delighted to be a guest on the Oasis sailboat as we sailed out into the ocean under the expert skipper and crew of the self-sustaining and self-supporting Oasis Sailing Club. And thank you, Oasis, and city staff for arranging a fun afternoon. And I have a couple of announcements from, well, from Fire Chief Poster. Save the date. On March 8th, the Fire Department will hold tryouts for seasonal lifeguards. Applications are accepted through the city's website. And on March 8th, also on March 8th, Newport Beach Lifeguards are planning a dedication ceremony for their newly remodeled headquarters in honor of fallen lifeguard Benjamin Carlson. The ceremony will start at 12 noon. Also, the Fire Department had its third boat fire on Saturday, February 21st. Twenty firefighters from eight units responded to Bayside and Coast Highway and found a 30-foot cabin cruiser fully involved with fire. One civilian was injured as he attempted to combat the fire prior to the department's arrival. He was transported by the paramedics to a burn center, and the cause is under investigation. I also have one recent last-minute entry from Tim Heatherton from the library. We have music for children, Pacific Symphony Youth Ensemble, this, in two weeks, Saturday, March 7th, from 11:00 to 12, 11:00 a.m. to 12 at the Central Library. The library will host an inspiring hour of music by talented young musicians from the Pacific Symphony Youth Ensemble. And finally, I would like to agendize for the March 10th meeting a proposal to my colleagues to schedule, per Council Policy A6, a public hearing on the city's coastal development permit related to the alternatives, footprint, and layout of firings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
I have none.
Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, I wouldn't bring this issue back up, but I received an email from Mr. Tom Larkin specifically asking me to address this issue in a public forum, and so I shall. During the discussion on dock rents, I made the point that two-thirds of the dock owners were receiving benefits equal to about $18 a year, while very few, including those active in the Stop the Dock Tax movement and the 2014 campaign, were getting substantial savings. I mentioned Mr. Larkin is having 19 boats at his dock, and he challenged that. And in fact, I did have Mr. Larkin's dock confused with one of his neighbors. According to tax records, Mr. Larkin has two docks on Lido Island, and as you will be able to see shortly when we put this up. He would appear to have room for maybe 10 to 15 small boats, but to his point, he does not have 19 boats at his dock. Now, of course, the fees are not based on the number of boats on your dock, but by the size of the docks themselves. Mr. Larkin's docks are an example of the point I was trying to make, that by having multiple U-shaped docks, his benefit from the change will result in a reduction in his annual dock rent, when fees are fully phased in in 2017, of approximately $737, according to city staff estimates. This is a 40.2% reduction compared to the 4.7% reduction of two-thirds of the dock owners without the U. So the next question was, was Mr. Larkin a contributor to the political efforts to change the harbor rents? And indeed, he was. Public records disclose that Mr. Larkin made maximum contributions of $1,100 to the winning candidates. In addition to that, he gave $25,000 to residents for reform, and $20,000 to the Neighborhood Preservation Committee, which was the Dave Ellis-controlled Slate Mail Committee that was used to circumvent the campaign contribution limits. So I think the point that I was trying to make is illustrated well with this example. Now, just to close out this issue, the dock owner who did have 19 boats will see his rent reduced by $1,182.92 when fully phased in, and he will receive a reduction of 42.7%. Later.
Thank you.
So...
Oh, you have something else?
I have something else. So we have had, since we've made our change in the firings policy, some very significant developments on our beaches, most notably, as will come up here in the slides momentarily, people in Corona del Mar who are digging holes in the sand itself, putting wood in the hole, and setting a fire directly on the beach. We've had several of these over the past several weeks. You can go on to the next slide. They leave the hot ashes on the beach. They leave the wood there. It washes out in the tide, and it creates an environmental mess. This is on the peninsula. Now, presumably, somebody could have put that table in their car and drove, and driven it 20 miles to the beach, and carried it to the beach, and then put it on the fire pit. But the more likely scenario, it was taken off of somebody's back porch and put into the firing. And I think this is sort of the iconic photograph of the problems that have been created since we've had the change in the policy. Next photo, please. Here you see some of the trash that's been left on the beach since we've gone and moved some of the firing around. As you can see, they're right next to the trash cans, but that doesn't seem to matter. Next slide, please. Here you see some of the wine bottles, some of the additional trash. Next slide, please. We're told that the only people who are going down and using these firing are Boy Scouts and church groups, but it'll appear that these Boy Scouts are working on their merit badge in vodka mixing by some of the trash that's left behind. We simply owe our neighbors and our community better. In terms of how we're trying to implement this policy, it's not been done well. So I'd like to ask us to come back, perhaps in conjunction with Mayor Protem's action, with a report on the enforcement issues that have been raised since we've had the change. We've had people burning wood and the charcoal firing, other things like that, the costs that we've had to incur to enforce that, and the steps that we can make to better protect our beaches from the sound of activity in the future.
You can talk under public comments, or they'll be coming up later, later, yeah. Okay, I have three announcements. The first one is on the local coastal plan. On February the 11th, I attended our first community outreach meeting at Oasis. I think we had about 55 people there, not as many as I had hoped, and, but it was a good start, I guess you could say. And then on February the 20th, I attended a mayor's summit that was hosted by Concordia College and Councilmember Curry, and had a very interesting presentation by Rick Cole, the deputy mayor for the city of Los Angeles, and he talked about innovation and change, and the challenges that cities face today in dealing with those issues. And then lastly, me and Mayor, every once in a while, you really get to go to something that's pretty inspiring. And yesterday, February the 23rd, get the slides up there, I was honored to attend the tribute to the Iwo Jima Veterans Luncheon at the Marriott Hotel in Newport Beach. And at that presentation, I presented certificates to 26 survivors of the Battle of Iwo Jima. There was a large crowd in attendance. The Board of Supervisors members, Michelle Steele and Sean Nelson, provided certificates also. Now, this honored the 70th anniversary of the battle and the flag raising, which we're all familiar with, this iconic photograph of the flag raising on Mount Suribachi that was taken during the battle. That battle raged on from February 19th to February 25th. 70,000 Marines participated in that battle. 7,000 were killed. That's one out of every 10. 20,000 wounded. That means almost one-third were either killed or wounded in this battle. It was one of the bloodiest battles in Marine history. There were 27 Congressional Medal of Honor winners at this battle, the most in any, of any battle in the history of our country. And there's a famous quote by Admiral Chester Nimitz that said regarding this battle, "Among the men who fought on Iwo Jima, uncommon valor was a common virtue." And that flag was raised on, 70 years ago, yesterday, February the 23rd. And there were two flag raisings that day. There was an initial raising that was a smaller flag, and it was intended to be the official raising, but they, somebody decided to put a bigger flag up there and do a second raising of it. And there was a photographer up there who actually was not there to take a picture of it, and kind of took it by accident. And he swung his camera around and took this photograph at virtually the last second. His name was Joseph Rosenthal, and he won a Pulitzer Prize for this photo. And then, of course, the Arlington Monument in Arlington Cemetery was created right after World War II. It's the largest bronze sculpture in the world, and if anyone's been to Arlington, it's certainly one of the most inspiring sites in Washington, D.C. And now there's an effort to raise $3 million to bring a replica of this monument permanently to Camp Pendleton. And you can go to wwwmarines on iwojima.com to see how to contribute to this, if you're so inclined. But what they're bringing is a 12-and-a-half-foot cast-in-stone version that was done in 1945 and was a precursor to the 32-foot-tall monument that exists today. And the stories told by the survivors at that luncheon were really a moving tribute to their bravery and dedication. They truly are representatives of the greatest generation who sacrificed so much for the liberties and the freedom we enjoy today. I'd just like to show you a couple of pictures of a few of the gentlemen I met there. This first gentleman, his name was Robert Mueller, and he was a paratrooper, and there weren't many Marine paratroopers in World War II. In fact, he didn't get to jump onto Okinawa. He had to wait ashore with the rest of the Marines. But he did get to do, I think, one raid jump, I guess they called it, in Guadalcanal. But when I asked him, I asked him, because he was sitting at my table, I said, "Well, did you get to do a lot of practice jumps?" And he said, "No." He said, "They just put us in a plane and told us to jump." The next picture there is Gunnery Sergeant Amos Osoudis, and he was one of the first people to land on Iwo Jima. And he had, under his supervision, 300 men in LSTs. They were the first troops to come ashore. And he told me that he had 300 men that were, that he was directing, and only 19 survived. And the last one is Ray Little. Ray was 25 for the Battle of Iwo Jima. He told me he was one of the older, older people there. That makes him about 95 or 96 today. And when I thanked him for his service to the country, he just told me, he said, "Don't thank me. Thank those that didn't come home." It was really a pretty moving ceremony. So with that, we'll go to public comments on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from consent calendar. Those are items 1 through 11 for discussion. Public comments are invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are, pardon me, considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
Mayor Selic and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to comment on item number four, which is the final adoption tonight of an ordinance changing the rules for expanding non-conforming structures. I submitted a written comment suggesting that the city and the council could have done a better job clarity-wise of drafting the ordinance. But what I want to comment on tonight was the public notice of this action you're taking tonight. And the reason I'm commenting on it is later in the agenda, there is an item number 12, which is being continued because the public hearing on that land use item had not been properly noticed in the newspaper. There's a completely different noticing requirement for the adoption, for the introduction and adoption of ordinances that the city may pass. And for most of its history, the city of Newport Beach complied with that by publishing the full text of ordinances in our newspaper of record, which in recent years has been the Daily Pilot. In 2010, we transitioned to compliance with the state law requirement, which allows the city to publish a summary of what is in the ordinance when it's possible to produce a fair and accurate summary, much like the plain English summaries that one sees in the ballot book about statewide proposition, so that the public can immediately see what the proposition is going to do without having to read every twist and turn of the legal language. And when it's not possible to produce an accurate summary, it's required to produce a quarter-page ad in the newspaper announcing that and telling people where they can find it. I just wanted to read to you the summary that was published in advance of tonight's hearing 10 days ago in the Daily Pilot, and it summarizes this new ordinance in the following very concise way. "The proposed ordinance would modify the standards and process for reviewing building additions to homes that do not conform to current zoning standards." Now, I would submit, you wouldn't know much more from that than you know from the title of the ordinance, and you wouldn't know in any way what the details are without yourself searching for that. So I don't think we've complied with the requirement to publish a fair and accurate summary, so we should have had a quarter-page ad. But this is not just complaint, but it is a solution to the problem. The solution I would offer, as state law requires, City Council should dedicate, should designate who it wants to write the summary. And I think there's a really simple solution to that. The person writing the ordinance that you see in your staff report should, as part of the adoption process, make a little summary, like the public sees in the ballot. And then the clerk would only have to publish that pre-arranged and publicly reviewed summary, which you would know is clear, accurate, and tells the public what the ordinance would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the consent calendar?
Good evening, Mayor Selic and members of the City Council. My name is Mark Dixon. I am with, here with four other business owners in Newport Beach. We all own businesses in Newport Beach, and we all have in common that we are massage therapists. I'm here to thank Lieutenant Jay Short, Detective Sergeant Chuck Freeman, and Community Services Officer Wendy Jo of Newport Beach Police Department for the diligent job they did in researching the law, in researching the needs of the city, and in meeting with massage therapists, myself included, to help craft a law that's respectful of profession and very interested in working closely with the California Massage Therapy Council to craft an ordinance that protects the public, respects the profession, and does a continuing great job for the city of Newport Beach. A couple of things, I know we're now in the trend, in the period waiting for the March 10 final vote, that I'd like to bring to your attention. I'll be continuing to talk to these individuals about. One has to do with the fee, when it's established for massage establishment permits, and that is, we're hoping there'll be an adjustment in the fee for those who are CMTC certified, sole providers of massage, sole practitioners, because the background check's already been accomplished for them, a very rigorous background check. And there's no need for cost recovery of a background check that's already been accomplished by CMTC. So we're hoping that sole proprietors who are CMTC certified will be exempt from a fee to check their backgrounds. Also, there's this paragraph in the ordinance proposed that says that members of the opposite sex cannot receive a massage in the same room at the same time. Spas have what's called couples massage. I don't see anything in it. I don't know what anybody sees in it. To have somebody else on the next table receiving a massage, distracting from my peace and quiet, I would not want to have that. I've done it as a therapist in the same room with another therapist, and it can be distracting for all four people to have two therapies going at the same time. But some spas like it. Some spas like to advertise and provide couples massage for their clients. We're hoping that that can be adjusted so that when there's a desire for a business to have couples massage in the same room, that that can be, in some way, rewritten a bit to allow that. Otherwise, we're very pleased with the ordinance. It's possible some of my friends will be speaking tonight. I checked it out. We total about 140 years of time as professional massage therapists, and a lot of that time's been in Newport Beach. Thank you very much for your attention and time. Good evening.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to any of that?
It might be best to have the police respond to that, because I think the basis for not allowing the, in the same room, would be really kind of driven from concerns by the police department.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
That's our police, Wendy Jo.
Oh, that's the police. I was looking in the back. I thought he was coming. Sorry about that. Where's your uniform?
Hi, sir. My name is Wendy Jo. I'm the civilian investigator for the police department. I think that's a reasonable question and something that we're, we definitely like to look into. And we're not immediately opposed to, or have any reason to say no at this time.
Okay. Would that be something that you'd address in a future amendment and go ahead with this tonight, or what?
Well, you could take, you could, as a part of your motion, suggest that that be reviewed and included if police doesn't have any concerns in tonight's first reading, so we could bring it back for a second reading with the actual language. Is that okay with you, Mr. City Attorney?
I think probably what the best thing to do is, if, if you want to have that modification, maybe probably bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting. I don't think there's an urgency to get it, get it done tonight. So would you like us to look into that issue and possibly bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting?
Okay.
And it looks like Mr. Council...
Mayor Selich, there were two items the gentleman brought up that I'd like to explore.
Right. The other was the exempt from the fee.
The second was the fee issue, and I'm assuming the fees are established by looking at a comprehensive fee study, but those get reviewed periodically.
But if, but if he has, if a sole proprietor has already paid a fee for the background check, they should not have, I don't believe, they should have to pay that fee again. Wendy Jo, is that fee the same as you see it, or sorry, is the background check the same as you see it, or a different one?
We actually, that fee is currently being studied. And so the background fee is not a fee that, part of that is the application, the inspection. There are several things that go into that particular fee. But seeing his point, we didn't include the background in our fee. So it's not, it hasn't been complete, the study has not been completed, but that's not part of it.
All right. So we'll have a further discussion with the police department regarding the massage of the same side, or opposite.
Couples massages.
Couples massage and the fee. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments on the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing none. So staff's going to be recommending that we continue number three. Any other items? Mr. Kiff?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So any member of the council have any items to pull? Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
No items.
Councilmember Piattar?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
No items.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
None.
And I have none. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 11, with the exception of item 3, with the following changes. Item 3 will be continued to the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 4, ordinance number 2015-3, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Approving an Amendment to Title 20 Zoning Code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Revising the Amount of Floor Area Additions Allowed to Non-Conforming Structures." The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Yes, Bob Costin. About two sessions ago, there was a couple of agenda, consent calendar items. Unfortunately, I was dealing with the crisis of eighth grade finals. No, Mr. Webb, they were not mine. They're my son's. I couldn't pass eighth grade today. And those two projects were water quality projects that your staff had worked incredibly hard on for a number of years, and I wanted to thank them. I would have pulled it then if I had time. But from Mr. Webb's department, which I believe his positive can-do-get-it-done attitude permeates the entire department, John Kapler, Bob Stein, there's a bunch of guys that worked long and hard, and the two projects are merely $10 million worth of incredible, well, incredible projects that will have a great deal of water quality improvement projects, as well as habitat restoration. And also, the city attorney was most gracious, Leonie Mova Hill, is a delight, and I want to thank you all for your help on the projects.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to say hello to all the new members of the council. My name is Mary Ann Zippy. I live at 420 East Bay. At a recent town hall meeting addressing the resident permit parking program planned for a seven-block area of Balboa Peninsula, a resident asked the moderator how many residents there are in the affected area. I was astonished when we were told that they didn't know. Newport Beach Municipal Code requires that a majority of residents, 50% plus one, sign a petition requesting parking permits if they want them. The code also says all residents have to be counted, not residential units. An accurate count of residents is vital. If the city doesn't know how many residents there are, how do they know they've met the 50% plus one criteria when and if they do? However, instead of receiving a petition from us, the city is distributing ballots to us for a vote. At the same meeting, another moderator said that those who voted at the town hall meeting would not receive a mailed ballot. Yet my neighbor voted at the town hall and received a mailed ballot as well. My husband and I have been residents since 1982. He received a mailed ballot, and I did not. Our tenant did not receive a ballot. The ballot materials sent to my husband say that the ballot was sent to all residents of the area. I proved this isn't true. But because only households, not residents, are getting ballots, how many residents have been led to believe that it's one vote per household rather than every resident gets a vote? Do they know that they have to have them returned by this Friday? Do they know that they'll have to arrange for a permit for every car carrying every parent, sibling, child, grandchild, and friend who comes to visit after 4:00 p.m., every time they come, forever? Needless to say, we are extremely concerned about the haphazard way residents are being counted. We are concerned about transparency, that residents are not being told the whole story about the program's pros and cons. Therefore, I suggest that, one, this entire ballot, which is already compromised, should be scrapped; two, that an independent licensed agency administer the ballot process; three, that an accurate count of residents be established and communicated to the public; and four, that a new ballot be mailed to all residents, including me, with all the pros and cons listed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker.
My name is Tom Larkin, and I want to refute a few items that Councilman Curry brought up. Duffy, you don't have 19 votes in your dock. I got three, one of which is a 11-and-a-half-foot Novena. Pardon me, Councilman Curry, I could have more if I wanted. Wow. I don't want more. I like what I have. Secondly, I taped, or got the tape, of the meeting when Councilman Curry was talking at the last meeting, item 16, which I've had recorded, in that what he was saying is that a couple of us, he mentioned me and Bob McCaffrey, took advantage of the money that we put up to support a number of the members of the council. That is absolutely correct, and it's my choice. I have the right to vote for anybody I see fit to vote for, okay? I have the right to put my money anywhere it's legal for me to put my money. Councilman Curry has a personal grudge against me. I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but when he was running for the Assembly, he came before the new majority. Tony happened to be there that day. He got out of Dodge, where he was seeking our endorsement. I chaired the Political Affairs Committee, and I did not give him the endorsement. So his, he has a problem both with accuracy. He also has a bias, because we did not, as new majority, support him as he wanted. I want an apology from you, Councilman Curry, and I want you to apologize, or I have already taped the, your particular comments, which I will distribute to every bloody citizen in Newport Beach and let them make their own decision. We can let this die now, or we can let this turn into a true Bruja, and I'm not afraid to do it. So you want to apologize?
Well, Mr. Larkin, I think I indicated to you, sir, that you didn't have 19 votes, and I was wrong about that. So if it makes you feel better, I apologize. The point I was making is that you put $50,000 into the campaign, sir.
Second, before then, you also made the point that Tom Larkin and Bob McCaffrey were out supporting a bunch of other council people because we had all these votes, and it was going to save us a fortune.
Yes, sir.
I already pay $150,000 a year in property taxes, okay? It's not like I don't pay anything to the city and to the county. That's A. B, I think there is, in point of fact, a personal agenda on your part, because you did not get endorsed by new majority. Guess my time's up?
It is. Thank you, sir.
I don't hear from him?
Your time is up. He will have this chance to do what he wants to do, but your time is up, and thank you.
Well, then, can I just say that what you say depends on what I do? Is that fair?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Please step forward.
Mayor Selich and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher, and on a slightly different note, I would like to speak to you about strategic plans. It's a topic I had no idea I would be speaking about tonight, but early this morning, I went to a special study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, which is a district in which I am a ratepayer. And at that study session, they were reviewing their 2010-through-2015 strategic plan and developing their goals for the next five years, 2015-through-2020. The reason they were doing that is they had found the document that they had prepared for the last five years to be useful for the public, to know what to expect from the district, and for the staff of the district to know whether they were meeting those expectations or not. And moreover, they've been able to do this completely on their own, without throwing any money into the black hole of consultants and facilitators. At this city's January 31 planning session, you heard that Newport Beach has many little, many master plans that are goals and ideas for different things, but to the best of my knowledge, we are a municipal corporation with no strategic plan for any extended time that ties all those pieces together with definite goals and things we're trying to achieve. And it would seem, this, this may be one of those be careful what you wish for moments, but it would seem particularly timely to be considering something like this, because four of you were just elected for four-year terms, and you probably have ideas for what you would like the city to do and accomplish before you leave office. A strategic plan would be a chance for those thoughts to be publicly consolidated and articulated, and it would be a chance through public discussion to see if your ideas are in sync with what your constituents want to happen during the next four years. And four to five years from now, it would be a chance to look back and verify whether you had accomplished those goals or not. I think this would be a useful thing, and I think it's rather different than all the other little untied-together pieces that the city has, including its general plan, that doesn't really set or address issues like transparency that I've heard are a very big thing for the, for new city council members. And it would be good if we had transparency goals, like the Costa Mesa Sanitary District does, new things we want to achieve in the next four years. So again, for me, it might be be careful what you wish for, but I think for the city, it's something to consider. Thank you. And many other cities, by the way, in California have these.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Piattar?
Yeah, I don't know if everybody's done with public comments or not, but I have a comment.
Okay. Let's see if we have any more public comments. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. Councilman Piattar?
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but, you know, I didn't realize that the council members had the opportunity to bring in, do slideshows during their announcement section of the agenda. And I guess the question is, is, you know, Councilman Curry sat there, and it implied that Mr. Larkin, and by extension, the four beneficiaries of his expenditures, that Mr. Larkin did something illegal, because he circumvented the campaign contribution law, as Mr. Curry stated, when in fact, I would refer to it as free speech. But I guess the question to you is, are we all to bring our own slideshows for our own propaganda to rub each other's noses in the past election, or are we going to move on with life? You know, I'd love to have some council discussion as far as what the decorum is for that, because I'm happy to jump in if everybody wants to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll take that as a rhetorical question for the moment. Councilman Curry?
Well, just to close, the point so that the public record is perfectly clear. Mr. Larkin contributed nearly $50,000 in the last election. As he pointed out, it is his right to do so. We have campaign contribution limitations to candidates, but by funding the Slate Mail Committee that Dave Ellis ran, and it's legal to do that, I never used the word illegal, he was able to do that. Mr. Larkin will receive a benefit estimated by staff when the fees are fully phased in, in the amount of about $737, which is a 40.2% reduction over what he's currently paying versus $18 a benefit, which is what two-thirds of the other people getting this benefit are going to get, or about 4.7%. Those are simply the facts. Mr. Larkin, if you'd like to share those with people, be my guest.
Okay. Sir, sir, there's no debate back and forth between the audience and the diocese here?
Yeah, I'd like to have agendas for future council meetings, decorum for things like that. You know, to sit there and put a private citizen's dock on there and describe his tax savings and his political activities is, you know, not something I think we ought to be doing.
I would only note that I would not have done that, except I was requested to do that personally by Mr. Larkin.
Okay. All right. Kevin Muldoon, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Larkin, you give a lot to this community, whether it's Hogue Hospital or the University of Notre Dame, and I want to apologize to you personally for any offense that you may have felt from this council, and I appreciate your stance on these issues. You exercise in your political right, and you did so within the law. So I wanted to thank you and congratulate you, actually, for really changing the city. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further speakers at this time, we'll move on to oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilman Piattar?
Had my first Transportation Corridor Agency meeting last about two weeks ago. We have another one coming up this week, and we will be looking at and discussing different revenue or toll sharing or toll reductions to try to give some incentive for our CDM bypass.
Excellent.
On March 11th, Mayor Protem Dixon and I participated in the, I'm sorry, February 11th, I got the date wrong. Future-tripping. February 11th, Mayor Protem Dixon and I participated in the Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting, where we took up the question of wayfinding signage, most notably, a monument sign overhead of Balboa Avenue, right around Palm, Palm, Palm Avenue, Balboa Boulevard right around Palm Avenue, a lit sign that will be an introduction to the Balboa Village area, absolutely beautiful. It is on the website for those to take a look at, and the committee is really moving forward. We got some really good steam on completing our work program, that work program outlined a couple of years ago.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dixon?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Duffy?
I have none.
Councilmember Curry?
The Finance Committee will have its meeting at 6 o'clock on Thursday evening this week here in City Hall.
Okay. Thank you. On February the 18th, we had our second Local Coastal Plan Committee Outreach Meeting out on the peninsula. It was my birthday, so I didn't attend. How many people did we have there? Too old.
I think 100.
100?
Yeah, we had quite a few.
Wow. Terrific. Terrific. And then on February the 25th, I think this is really one of the most important ones. We're going to have a meeting here in the Civic Center, in the community room, on coastal bluffs and canyons. And that starts at 7:00 and goes to 9:00. And then on March the 4th, at the old City Hall site, we're going to have a meeting for the business property owners. So it's really important for folks that are interested in the coastal plan, or if you have property that might be affected, to come to these meetings and find out what's going on. Also, on the 18th of February, we had our first Tidelands Management Committee of the Year. We reviewed the Harbor Commission activities for, I think, about the previous quarter. We reviewed the Tidelands Capital Plan, and also reviewed the, where we are on the Balboa Island Seawall Project, and I had to leave that meeting early because of my birthday, so I'm going to keep getting that in. But anyway, I am told that the committee did vote to bring the Balboa Island Seawall issue to the city council for a study session for review and direction. Is that correct? And then on February the 26th... And then on February the 26th, this Thursday, the General Plan LCP Implementation Committee is going to meet at 4:30 in the Newport Coast Room Bay E of the Civic Center. We're going to have an update of our progress with the Coastal Commission staff and the discussions we've had with them. We're going to have an update on our community outreach program of where we are on that. Also, take a look at the draft implementation plan maps. And then we're going to have our first look at a draft lower-cost overnight visitor accommodation program. So that's at 4:30 in the Newport Coast Room in Bay 2E of the Civic Center. Okay, so now we're on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item number 12, it's the Balboa Island Residential Condominium Prohibition Code Amendment. And due to an error in the publication of this notice, the staff is recommending that this be continued to March the 10th, so I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
On the continuance?
Second. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Selich and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. This is the matter I alluded to earlier. I was speaking then about the noticing requirement for when the council is going to take action on an ordinance. This does involve an ordinance, but the noticing problem here was about noticing the public hearing, which was scheduled to be held tonight. And although the staff report doesn't explain in detail, I, I believe the issue is when a public hearing about a property, that there is an obligation to, to mail notice to everyone within 300 feet. And when that involves more than 1,000 people, in this case, all of Balboa Island, the city has a option to publish an advertisement in the newspaper instead of doing the mailings. But the ad has to be an eighth page, which is this size, and this particular one came out in a smaller size. So that I think is what the noticing issue is. I would, number one, like to commend the staff on self-policing itself. I myself did not notice that there was a problem with this. Number two, I would like to commend the city clerk for the practice, which we've not always followed, of putting the city logo on the notices that have to do with city action. It makes it much easier for people trying to look through this section of the daily pilot, if that's where they get the information about the city, to spot the things that are relevant to Newport Beach and separate them from the other ads. Those are the two commendations. The third comment I would like to make is to ask, when this matter was scheduled for a public hearing before the Planning Commission, did we publish the proper-sized ad for that hearing to notify all the people on Balboa Island? I assume they weren't all mailed notice, maybe they were. And if we did not do it, then do we, do we have any obligation to correct that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comment on, on that aspect of it?
Mayor Selich, the noticing for the Planning Commission hearings was done correctly.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it forth for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
We move on to current business. Item number 13, this is the transfer of development rights within the Newport, or the North Newport Center Planned Community.
Mayor Selich and members of the city council, this item is a transfer of development rights proposed by the Irvine Company. I do have a presentation running, but give me a moment. There we are. First, a little background. General Plan Policy 614-3 allows for transfers subject to council approval, provided the, it's consistent with the intent of the general plan, and it doesn't result in any adverse traffic impacts. North Newport Center Planned Community, which really rings the upper part of North Newport Center and Fashion Island, allows transfers with a specific procedure. It does allow transfers from location to location. It allows for the conversion of non-residential uses. And the basic finding is that it doesn't result in increased trips or any adverse traffic impacts. The other point I wanted to make is that it does require the city council to approve it. It actually says shall approve if these findings are met, and it is a ministerial action. We also wanted to note, we've done seven prior transfers since 2007, when the Planned Community text was adopted. So here is a graphic depiction of North Newport Center in yellow, and we've got some regional commercial intensity going from Fashion Island to Block 100, about 83,000 square feet. We've got theater seat intensity, which is actually being converted to office intensity, and going to Block 600. And we've got regional commercial activity also going to Block 100, and we have a small amount from Block 500 to Block 600. Really, the purpose of the transfer is really to allow five of six buildings that are owned by the Irvine Company in Block 100 to be reoccupied and reused on a continuing, ongoing basis. It also would allow a, a small amount in Block 600, which is currently housing 24-Hour Fitness, to be reoccupied and reused. The basic transfers do reduce future expansion of Fashion Island by about 100,000 square feet, just under that, and, and obviously takes away the, the future expansion of the theater seats, about 1,020 seats. And we did prepare a traffic analysis by StanTech. They're here tonight, if you have any questions about the traffic analysis. And basically, the trip comparison between what's authorized today, entitled today, and with this in the future would be actual reduction of traffic trips in the PM peak hour. So staff does feel that we do have the facts to support the required findings to approve this, and basically, the council must approve the transfer of development rights as proposed. So staff's available for any questions that the council may have. The applicant is here, and the traffic engineer is here as well.
Okay. Any questions, the staff? Okay, does the applicant wish to make a statement? Anyone else care to address the council on this item?
What we have in this case, by, by the way, my name is Barry Allen. I live in Harborview Hills, directly across the street from the City Hall, and I've lived here since 1976. I'm opposed to the item requested by the Irvine Company. We have, on the one hand, general rules of planning, that your staff has said make that density transfer before you tonight a ministerial act. But this is not an ordinary density transfer. We have a written promise, a written contract by the Irvine Company to this council and the people of the city of Newport Beach, saying, if you let us build these two huge office towers, we will tear down these old office buildings. You can hold the Irvine Company to its promise, enforcing the contract is not a ministerial Why do you think there was so little opposition at the time? And that's because they agreed to this, and they also talked about building residential in the area. By the way, myself and others have frequently contacted the city to ask how it's been moving on the residential issue for that area where those old office buildings are. And I was always told that they were, they had not heard from the Irvine Company on it, but they were working on it. Now we find out that the good old Irvine Company never intended to have residential there, so they tried Measure Y, and they told you that it polled well, et cetera, et cetera. Then you saw what the residents, i.e. the voters, didn't like it, 70% to 30%. So now the end run starts with this, not a featured item that makes the papers, so it's going to skate through unless you require TIC to come here and make public how they came up with all these numbers. Remember, these are their numbers, that they are being told that they are correct. Remember that this is the same Irvine Company who told this council, not this group of people, but this council, when they were asked some questions about the medical building and transferring things around in the medical buildings, that they owned all the property there, they voted for it, and then they found out the next day, when the owner of one of the buildings got a little shocked by it, that all of his, all of his transfer rights had been given away. Needless to say, the city had to go back on that because they made a promise to something, there was somebody else that had it, and they came to you and represented certain things. Even the staff report says, under Analysis 4, 5, and 6 paragraph, well, TIC won't occupy one of the buildings, but has an option to reoccupy it, et cetera, et cetera. They promise, then they don't promise, then they renig, and all the time, all they do is get what they want, because nobody except a few people come and tell you what's happening. Does anybody see that the new, not yet occupied tower, a tower, the tower other than PIMCO, is taller than PIMCO? I was here the night those towers were approved, and I don't remember who the council person was. One of the council persons asked the Irvine Company, or the Irvine Company representative, are they the same height? And the answer was yes. Well, we all know with our own eyes that the building is taller, and the TIC advertised it as the tallest office building in Orange County.
Thank you, Barry.
I have just a couple of minutes?
30 seconds.
All right? I'll skip to, I'll skip to my final. The only thing I have to add is that you don't hold the Irvine Company to its promise now, you will face four years of Irvine Company bullying this council. The Irvine Company is testing you on this particular issue. Don't be bullied. Hold the Irvine Company to its written agreements, that they were going to demolish these buildings and build something else there, and the discussion was residential. Hold the Irvine Company to its promise, and don't pay any attention to staff when they tell you it's a ministerial act. It's not. It's discretionary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Petrus?
Just, when?
Oh, okay. Okay, next speaker, please.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I endorse the previous speaker's comments. I have a few others of my own. I'm trying to summarize the comments that I submitted to you in writing, because I think they're a little hard to follow. I, I realize that there is this escape clause that got written into the general plan for the benefit of the Irvine Company and others, but I, I really think we have a very poor system here, where the public sees in the general plan, we were told in Measure Y, the general plan was important, we had to amend it. It has development limits in it for every block in Newport Center, not just the Irvine Company ones, but all of them. Yet we have, without changing those numbers in the general plan, which is easy to do, but would require a hearing before the Planning Commission, and here, there's a process for that. We have this ongoing musical chairs of the entitlements moving around seven times in the last seven or eight years, so, so rapidly that the public can't keep track of what is happening. I just think that's a, a very poor system. And I also, I think in my first comment, it reminded you, in looking at the general plan and what we had there, I saw we're supposed to be, the public is supposed to be safeguarded by an implementation plan of a tracking system that we are supposed to have since 2006, so that we can see not only in Newport Center, but throughout the city, what the current development is and how it compares to those limits, which we would think are really the limits, but in this case, we have all the footnotes we have to follow to find what they really are. I'm not sure we have that tracking system. And in this particular case, on, I think this is page 11 of your packet, you have this tracking thing, and as Barry pointed out, these are numbers provided, I don't know by whom, I don't know if they're gross square feet or net square feet, how they compare to limits in the general plan. And they have numbers that don't add up, like for the 600 block, which is where the PIMCO Tower and the Island Hotel are. It says, it lists here the existing entitlement. Current entitlement is 1,600,000 square feet, and the existing development is 1,300,000. If you subtract those, the difference is about 300,000. But it says the only development remaining is 17,300 square feet, magically just enough to reopen the 24-Hour Fitness, so that, something wildly wrong with that. And as my time is running out, the other two comments I wanted to make are, in the staff report, under funding requirements, it says there's no budgetary effect of this. Obviously, likewise Measure Y, city staff had to devote some time to this. So I would hope that the Irvine Company has paid an application fee for processing this. As a member of the public, I would just be curious what the magnitude of the dollars is, how much did the Irvine Company pay for our staff time? And finally, when things go through the normal planning process of going through the Planning Commission and coming here, there's a resolution. The planning resolutions always have an indemnification clause in them, that if somebody were to initiate litigation against this, thinking there was something wrong with this, we would be reimbursed by the applicant for whose benefit we're doing that. I don't see any indemnification clause in any of this. Thank you.
Carl Cassidy? I was told that there were unicorns flying around the room down here, so I came down for, for entertainment. But on a more serious note, I'd like to talk about this not being a ministerial act. Okay? Right on the face of this document, at the very bottom of the page, there says there's no budgetary impact related to this item. I would invite the drafter of this ministerial, clearly not a ministerial act, he's suggesting that his salary and the, and his esteemed colleague, Ms. Brandt, that all of their time is not a part of the budget. We all know that's not true. We, and clearly, we know that this is not a ministerial act. This ministerial act is defined by, on page 13-3 of this, it says it involves little or no time on the part of the public officials looking at this. This is a 26-page document that requires public engineers, very professional people. This does not involve little or no impact. This requires a SEQA study. Okay? This is, this is not a minor, a minor item regarding doc tax or something. Many of you were elected. This is an item as, that was brought, this, that impacts the overall budget of this city. This needs to go to the Finance Committee, as was suggested when you came earlier. This is, this is an item that needs SEQA approval, and it needs to go to the Finance Committee. I also would suggest that we're not, the paint isn't even dry on Measure Y. And there's some language in here that, that refers to the prior general plan amendment. Okay? That this council decided needed to be amended. And there was a lot of work, hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars to amend that plan. The council decided, the public ruled, that that plan, and now to say this is a little, a ministerial act, is totally duplicitous and inconsistent with what the voting public told you. This needs a SEQA impact study, and it need, and it needs look at, at the budget. That's all. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Staff, would you like to, first of all, Kim, comment on the veracity of all the numbers that are in the report? And then Erin, comment on the, why this is a ministerial act in the development agreement?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Selich. So the, the tracking table that's attached to your staff report is something that is, is submitted to us by representatives of the Irvine Company. And then we go through the process of verifying all of the numbers and double-checking all of the numbers with the past transfers that the city council has approved for the North Newport Center. It is important to remember that the application fee that is paid by the Irvine Company for this requested action is intended to cover the staff time that is involved in preparing the staff report for the, the legal assistance that's involved in this time, you know, as, as our in-house support. So this is an item that is covered by application fees. We do not typically report to you the application fee that is associated with any of the items that, of normal applications that come before you. We normally are, identify funding requirements when there's a new contract that's required in order to implement a proposed program. So it's not typical for us to report the application fee that was paid for the request before you, on an agenda. So we do double-check the numbers. We do ensure that they are consistent with our records, and, and if there is something that is an error, then we will go back and make sure it's corrected. In review of the tracking table that is attached to your staff report, we did notice that there, and it is a draft report, a draft table, we did notice that there's some items that can be clarified, and we'll be doing that as, at a staff level. You are not adopting that tracking table. This is something we maintain within our department.
Okay, thank you. Erin?
And just briefly, the term ministerial under the California Environmental Quality Act has a, a specific meaning, and as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act, it says that it's a governmental decision involving little or no personal judgment by the public official as to the wisdom or manner of carrying out the project. Now, the transfer of development rights in the North Newport Center Planned Community, it's a ministerial act under SEQA because it only involves applying fixed standards. And in this case- And in this case, it explicitly states in the agreement that all the council's actions related to this matter are ministerial acts. This isn't really a discretionary type of decision that's made here, and it meets that definition under, under the requirements of SEQA.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to that as a lawyer?
No, Barry, Barry, please, sit down. Sit down.
Discretionary acts for 43% of the county of Orange?
Barry. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I wanted to comment that I have spent at least 30 years plying the trade of planning and transportation engineering. I have participated in general plans around the state of California. I can tell you that I have, in fact, put together plans and programs very similar to this in communities all around the state. This is vanilla planning. This is not anything new and exciting. I wish it were. But I can share with you that our neighbors to the north in Irvine do this every day in the Irvine Business Complex and in other planning areas around that city. Costa Mesa has this available to them in the North Costa Mesa area. And in fact, the Sagerstroms, the Saciokas, all enjoy the ability to transfer trips. The county of Orange does it around the Tustin Air Base. It is, this is de rigueur planning. It is a zero-sum game. It basically says there is a pot of trips that are available for development potential, and that so long as that pot is kept whole, they can be moved across discrete boundaries that don't impact traffic. The evidence is there. The math adds up. This is standard cookie-cutter planning. And for that very reason, I will move the, the action to find that the proposed TDR is not subject to SEQA and adopt Resolution 2015-13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving the TDR. I would also add that the notion of any future development in the 100 block would need to have traffic associated with it. Without a transfer like this, it has no traffic capacity and therefore could not be considered for anything, whether it was office, residential, any type of use. So this is, in fact, fulfilling or forwarding along that vision. So I make that motion.
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
And Councilman Pieter.
Yeah, I was wondering if staff could address, Barry Allen made a comment that there was an agreement with the Irvine Company as far as what to do with these buildings, I presume outside of the development agreement. Do we know what that agreement is?
Mr. Mayor, if I can address that question. I do believe that the reference was to the last transfer of development rights within, within North Newport Center, whereas the majority of the buildings in Block 100 were to be either demolished or rendered uninhabitable or inhabitable space. Until such time, they could determine exactly what the, what the outcome would be. So it was just the last transfer of development as they were moving intensity around for the two office towers. And then eventually, they, they decided to build a residential at the corner of Jamboree and San Joaquin Hills Road.
So there was no separate agreement or part of the development agreement? It was just the last transfer that we did?
That, that is correct.
And, and they stated at that time they thought they were going to tear it down or put residential in, and now they're transferring other development rights there instead? So they changed their mind, it sounds like?
I think what it says is, tear it down or keep it vacant. And so there's an option there. So I don't think there's ever any requirement that it be torn down. That's my recollection.
And, and like you said, now they're moving development rights there, so they'll be able to use all but one of the buildings. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, please bring the vote up. Okay, next item of business is item number 14, the Lido Partners settlement agreement.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, you do have a staff report about this proposed settlement agreement. It includes a map. I think the, the map is really what tells the story. This is a settlement agreement between the city and Lido Partners that would address a longstanding accessway gentle dispute over how trucks get in and out of the Via Lido Plaza, delivery trucks primarily. So staff is here. Leoni worked on this the most. Dave Webb is available, too, if you have questions.
Okay, any questions of staff in the report? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment on this item.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is an item I seem to recall having seen on your closed session agendas. So I assume you've discussed this somewhat already, and I commend the city on presenting the final settlement agreement publicly. First comment or question I had about this, again, looking at the funding requirement section of this, it says as part of the settlement, each party is responsible for their own costs of litigation. I don't know if the new council members know the extent to which the public is really in the dark about what the city's litigation costs are, not in connection with this, not only in connection with this, but in general. I recently heard to my amazement that most of the contracts that the city attorney makes with outside attorney firms, even though our city charter says it's the city council who should be making the contracts for outside representation if, if something is needed to supplement our own in-house capability, those contracts are, many of them, if not most, are confidential. So the public doesn't even know who we're contracting with, what the terms of the contract are. So in this particular case, I would really be curious to know how much the litigation costs are that we are responsible for paying. The public is in the dark about that. Then I have a specific comment on page 23 of this, since the public is being given a chance to review this. There is a quitclaim deed, and although this does have to do with the old city hall that is 3,300 Newport Boulevard, the quitclaim deed is saying, when recorded, it should be mailed to the Newport Beach City Manager at 3,300 Newport Boulevard. And I think the mailman will find out that the city manager doesn't currently live at that address.
I do go over there, though, quite frequently, Jim.
And the final comment I would like to make is we have, as Mayor Selich announced, there have been ongoing workshops about the local coastal program that we're seeking to certify. One of the public concerns in that has been about the city's ability to police itself in issuing coastal development permits to itself. And this site is in the coastal zone, and it involves building a new driveway and changing a circulation pattern. And I would just be curious if we have considered whether it needs a coastal development permit as an example of our thoroughness in self-policing ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council for motion or discussion.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As the public is aware, during the approval process for the development of the Lido House Hotel on the former city hall site, Lido Partners raised concerns about how its delivery trucks would access the Via Lido Shopping Center once the hotel was built. The city always contended that Lido Partners did not have a perpetual legal right to access the shopping center across the city hall site, and in April 2014, filed a legal complaint against Lido Partners. However, the city also, is also concerned about the continued revitalization of Lido Marina Village, which requires business owners to be able to conduct their business in an efficient manner. Fortunately, without either side admitting any fault, the city staff and Lido Partners reached a consensus agreement which allows the trucks serving Via Lido Plaza to access the property from Via Aporto. The settlement agreement will result in a complete dismissal of the lawsuit and, more importantly, allows both parties to move forward. I commend both Lido Partners and staff for their efforts to reach a mutually satisfactory agreement which enables Lido House Hotel and other development in Lido Plaza to proceed smoothly. This agreement saves taxpayer dollars and avoids a costly legal process. I move to support the settlement agreement between the city and Lido Partners.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, before you vote, Leoni, you had a comment about SEQA finding here.
Yeah, in addition to requesting, recommending that you approve the agreement, we also recommend that you do find the approval of the agreement exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act for the reasons set forth in your staff report.
And then I'd add one more thing. I really appreciate Mayor Protem Dixon's work on this. She came in right after the election and said, let's see how we can solve this problem. And I was skeptical, but this was solved through determination by Ms. Dixon.
And some good legal work by staff. Thank you.
Dan, your motion is amended to include the SEQA finding.
Okay.
And second, concierge.
Yes.
Second. Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, I just want to tag on quickly to what Mr. Kiff has said. I think we could all take a page from our Mayor Protem and learn from this how to best represent our constituencies. Mayor Protem Dixon, I am very appreciative and humbled by the work that you did here. You came in as a newly-elected member of this council and brokered a deal that brought together people who, before this time, were at odds with each other. I think this shows your commitment to the city and the way that you can do it in a manner where everybody comes out a win-win. So I really congratulate you. You've boosted this council by your actions. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, bring up the voting screen, please. There we go.
The amended motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, move on to item number 15. This is a mid-year budget and staffing update with recommendations to revise certain revenue estimates, increase one expenditure appropriation, and fund transfers, and adopt a resolution amending our previous budget resolution, and adjust position staffing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We do have a staff report in your binders and available for the public. I hope that's fairly self-explanatory. If you have any questions, both Dan and I are available.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Pieter.
I see we've got the 5.1 surplus. Now you're appropriating $40,000 to the Unappropriate Assessment Fund. And we got $2.5 million for our Compensated Absences Fund. What is that $2.5 million for?
Actually, it's $2.5 million to the Insurance Reserve Fund, and then $1 million to the Compensated Absences Fund. So three and a half, three and a half total to those two funds. So the, the General Insurance Reserve Fund is what we will set aside sometimes for either a claim against us, either judicially or otherwise. And then the Compensated Absences Fund is, we have an actuarial review, what is owed in case, say, all the employees left at once and took their accrued leave time with them. And what this does, we think we're a little bit below where we need to be, so our proposal is to move some money to that fund. It's generally consistent with what the auditors would look at when they look at what a proper level of funding.
So how, did we just miss it at the last budget? Or are we finding more people leaving than we anticipated?
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't miss it. Whenever we see an opportunity to buttress that fund, given at least a little bit of time under our belt, and over the past year or two, we have had a number of people leaving, either through our voluntary severance efforts or otherwise. We did outsource a couple of functions, so they leave with that, sometimes with their leave time. So we like to, we like to bring the fund back to where it should be. But these things really happen over time, and depending on the council's wishes and my, my own recommendations as to where, why we would put funds in at a specific moment.
Are there specific claims in the general liability fund? Or just looking ahead at other litigation?
There's always, there's always specific claims, but there also falls under general claims that we might expect in the future.
And I don't see, on either of these two funds, the status. I don't see, oh, we've got this much in the bank.
Oh, Dan may know off the top of his head, or...
I mean, does this put our general liability fund into the $10 million range or the $20 million range, or has this just put us up to $3.5 million?
In the case of general liability, we'll be in the, about $10.5 million with this proposed adjustment, and moving us to, close to, to 100% funded of where we'd want to be, getting us back on target.
100% funded based on?
Based on the actuarial estimate of our claims. So they'll make a recommendation of what our expected liability is, both known claims, including incurred but not reported claims. And that, that sets the baseline of our target of, of what we're trying to fund through, through current activity.
I guess that begs, the next question is, where do we stand in our liability compared to other cities of our size?
You mean in terms of just the insurance reserve liability?
Well, I'm thinking, are we an easy target? Or are we just stupid that we're getting sued this much? Or are we getting sued less than what most cities get sued?
Well, one of the complexities of Newport Beach is just our demographic. We're visitor-oriented. We have a lot of people come into town. We have older infrastructure. So we have a bold council that is often willing to pursue, you know, innovative code changes. And these things do come up, come with a liability. So we, we do talk to an actuarial about what's specific for our, for our community, and our size community, and our demographic.
A bold council, that's very, very diplomatic. I like that.
I try to be diplomatic most times.
I guess my only hesitation is, I would love to see us start a debt repayment fund. And, but it looks like most of the debt, or most of the surplus is being designated for other, other things. Now, I see that we got the $2.5 million, the million, you got the $40,000. What happens to the balance?
The balance essentially will go to the residual general fund, fund balance that can be, the council can provide us direction to do anything you want with, essentially.
Yeah, we didn't make a recommendation there except to go to fund balance. And you, you could have that conversation as a part of your, your council's deliberations in adopting the new budget. We're just a few months away, and you have an opportunity to weigh in entirely on what happened. This money doesn't go away. It's just set up in fund balance.
Well, usually if it sits in the general fund, somebody will figure out a way to spend it.
No, no, you, you guys have to spend it. You have to authorize its expenditure. It's not in the budget for expenditure.
It's not increasing any of the other aspects of the budget?
Correct.
Other than what you showed tonight?
It's just accrues, yes.
All right. Then I guess we can save that for budget discussions for the next fiscal year.
Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, I just, I look at this a little bit more simply. We ended the year with a budget surplus, and it is in your, your wisdom and opinion that instead of allocating it for an expenditure, let's put it into funds to save. We are saving the, the assets that we received as surplus. It's, that's, that's what I'm getting out of this. And you are, in fact, doing it in places where, based on the professional opinion of actuarials, that we can limit our liability in case of future events. So in fact, we are looking forward to events and being proactive in our liabilities. I think that that's wisdom, and therefore I will move the three budget amendments and the adoption of Resolution 2015-14.
Do we have a second? Okay. Public comments? Any public comments?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And after that discussion about the budget, I would like to speak about the personnel issues, which are in the resolution at the end of this. Among the things being slipped in through this is bumping up the salary ranges for our city's police chief and fire chief. I'm not quite sure where the ranges exactly come from, but looking at the city's budget, I think it's just an interesting observation. Although they're currently paid slightly less than the city manager, according to our budget, when one adds in the benefits, the police chief and the fire chief, both individually, cost the city's taxpayers more than the city manager does. I don't know if that's an expression of the... I don't know if that's an expression of the humility of our current city manager, or if the police and fire chiefs are being overpaid, but it seems an odd situation in which the top person is paid or costs less than the people under him. The other personnel aspect in this is a couple of positions, the titles are being changed, people are being moved around. It seems an appropriate time to remind the city council, especially the new members, of our city charter and Section 601 of that, that sets up the administrative departments of the city. The essence of this is the people of Newport Beach rely on the city council to establish the positions through which the city will be administered, and rely on the city manager to populate those positions with good people, which he does. The very last sentence of this Section 601 of the charter says, "The city council shall provide for the number, the titles, qualifications, the powers, duties, and compensation of all officers and employees." The public can, with some difficulty, see the compensation that you are setting in the budget. I, in the time I've been paying attention, haven't really seen the city council establish powers and duties for our many employees, someplace that the public can look at. I'm sure the personnel department has that, I don't know that the public has ready access to knowing what those powers and duties are. But moreover, there's some confusion about the titles and how those are established. We're seeing some titles changed here, but in the public documents I review, I've seen odd things like what the budget calls a tree superintendent is now being called a landscape manager. I'm seeing a water enforcement manager now being called a senior engineer. I'm seeing assistant chiefs in the police department calling themselves deputy chiefs on the documents and so forth. When the titles keep changing around without any council action, it's very difficult to reconcile who is who in the budget. And another thing that has changed since we've gone kind of paperless agendas, we don't see ownership of these exactly, there's no signature on them. But on the second page, there is a paragraph saying, as a side note, "I did not approve the placement of some additional requests on the agenda tonight." So I'm wondering if these personnel changes are tentative ones that were not approved, and if so, it's just a confusing matter to have such a proliferation and changing of titles on the business cards that the people have and what we see on the staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Carl Cassidy, I'd like to speak to what Councilmember Pieter had to say with regard to the budget. I would like to affirm what you had to say, and I want to encourage you to do additional efforts to, because you can, and I'm not quite as diplomatic as city manager Kiff, but there's a reason you have to put $2.5 million more into your insurance fund. And I would encourage you to maybe look at some of the cases, and look at what the acting presiding judge of the appellate, the third appellate district, had to say about how Newport Beach conducts its affairs and its legal affairs, and why you need to take $2.5 million, and why most of it's going to, and I'd encourage you to look at what you're spending for legal cost and what other cities are spending. I think that's a good place to start, and I'd encourage you to do that. In addition to looking at the cases, and some of the cases you're continuing to look at in closed session, the other thing I would encourage you to do, in all due respect to Mr. Harp and what was said with, that we, we are, this is a bold council. You take, you get, you get proper advice from your city attorney, he recommends to you with regard to what, how a permit or fee should be classified in the harbor, and you choose not to follow his advice. He explains to you, and you have gentlemen on this council who have decades of experience in finance, who tell you what that is, that that's a possessory interest, and yet we have someone speak up and say, oh, if they don't have exclusive use of the property, you ignore your city attorney, you ignore the elder statesman of your council, and you take a legal position, and it makes you wonder what, whether, what itch or what you're scratching when you decide that if you don't have exclusive use of the property, that you don't, that, that, those individuals don't have to pay tax. So if I go down and put, and anchor my boat, and choose not to follow municipal law, because those, in that U, that those people, not unlike the LA Dodgers, that don't have exclusive use of Chavez Ravine, and went all the way to the Supreme Court trying to assert what your attorney has advised you, there's no wonder you're paying $2.5 million more into your fund. You're asking the right questions. When they tell you it's not about the money, it's about the money. And when you, when you, when you, and you take actions to not follow the laws that the government has set up with respect to CEQA and other requirements that you're required to take, and you, and you act on your own against your city council to make certain actions and not follow the lead of the gentleman that have been here before, and go out on your own? I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, I'll close the public comments, bring it back to council. I made the same observation on the police chief's salary and Mr. Kiff's salary, and I'll just tell you what he told me, and that is that the SC football coach makes more than the president of the university, and I'll leave it at that. So there's a motion and a second, please bring up the voting screen.
The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pieter.
I just want to point out, everybody's got on their desk tonight a draft agenda for the next council meeting that the city manager's put together for us, so that you know what's going on a couple of weeks in advance. As he'll tell you, it's not set in concrete, so if you guys have comments, they usually are meeting the day after and trying to solidify it, and I'm sure the mayor appreciates the input, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of iconic Newport Beach resident Henry T. Seagerstrom, who passed away at his home on February 20th after a brief illness. To say that Mr. Seagerstrom lived an extraordinary life, both as a businessman and philanthropist who literally transformed, transformed Orange County as we know today, is an understatement. He was born to a Swedish immigrant family of lima bean farmers, and Mr. Seagerstrom graduated with an MBA from Stanford University in 1948, and went on to become the managing partner of C.J. Seagerstrom and Sons, and is best known for his vision in building South Coast Plaza, and as the founding chairman of the world-class Seagerstrom Center for the Arts. What some may not know is that Mr. Seagerstrom is also a decorated World War II veteran who interrupted his studies at Stanford to enlist with the US Army after the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. In 1944, while serving with the 103rd Infantry Division near the Rhine River in Germany, he was nearly killed by artillery fire that killed a wounded comrade he was carrying. Mr. Seagerstrom lost a finger, underwent 20-plus surgeries, and learned to sign his name left-handed, and his valor earned him a Purple Heart. So on behalf of the entire city of Newport Beach, we extend our condolences to the entire Seagerstrom family at the loss of a great American who served his country in so many, many ways, and he will be missed. There will be visitation at Fair Haven Memorial Park in Santa Ana Saturday, February 28th, between 10:00 and 6:00 p.m. And the family has asked that in lieu of flowers, donations be made to the Seagerstrom Center for the Arts, and checks can be sent to the Henry Seagerstrom Memorial Fund at the Seagerstrom Center for the Arts. And with that, we're adjourned.